We're getting our one call in board member online, so bear with us just a second, please. Got it? Okay, all right. We've already done roll call earlier. This is the call to order for the North Kansas City Board of Education meeting this evening. If you'll please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And roll call was already taken in a previous executive session. Susan Hines is joining us tonight via video conference call. And we're ready for Dr. Avila Angeli, who will be giving us our extraordinary educational experiences.
Well, good evening. Thank you all for joining us. And we have some wonderful, wonderful celebrations to share tonight, starting with Sloane Burke, if she would come forward at this time. This summer, Staley Jr., Sloane Burke, advanced all the way through the international level of HOSA, Health Occupation Students of America, and the Clinical Nursing Competition. After qualifying for finals by placing in the top three in Missouri, then demonstrating her knowledge on a skills test, she put her talents into action on a practical exam to take third place. Sloane's accomplishments put her at the very top of a pool of hundreds of competitors and make her the first HOSA medalist in Staley history. Congratulations, Sloane.
That is awesome. Sloane, thank you. That is awesome that you are representing us at an international level. That's fantastic. And I have to tell you, I have many nurses in my family, and I think the things that stand out most for me is their attention to detail, their absolute diligence about everything, that nothing goes by them. They catch it all, and their compassion. So I'm assuming that you have all of those traits and more. Thank you. I have to ask you, tell us a little bit more about the trials, the skills test.
Yes. So the first round is at our high school at Staley. And we get textbooks from whatever topic or event it is. So I was given nursing school textbooks and just told to study through them over winter break. And then we take a test in January, February. And the top 10 from there move on to state. And there you do more of a skills competition where there's 10 skills that are nursing-related skills or whatever event that you're in. And they choose one, and you don't know which one it's going to be, so you prepare for all of them. And then they choose the top three from the skills to move on to internationals. And so once you're there with the top three from every state or country, you move on to another test, which is about 200 people. And they choose the top 20 from there to move on to the final skills round, and then the top three from there. So that's the process of that.
Of elimination. It sounds complicated, yeah. So who all do you have here with you this evening?
I have my mom and my dad here with me.
What do you hope your future holds?
My plan is to go to medical school at probably UMKC and stay local here. So we'll see what the future holds.
And how early on did you have an interest in nursing?
I don't know that I, there's a time I specifically had an interest in nursing, but I've had an interest in medicine for quite a few years, since I was young. So I hope to see that through and see where I go with that.
Well, we can't wait to watch that. You are just so very professional and poised in your speech. I can't imagine you being of such great assistance to people, too. My gosh, we're very blessed to have people like you. So thank you for that, and we can't wait to follow you in your future. We would love to shake your hands as you come around and congratulate you. Thank you.
Next, we have some extraordinary staff, starting with D.E. Brown, if he would come forward at this time. Each year, the Missouri State High School Athletics Association recognizes one outstanding official in each championship-level sport. The Official of the Year honor is the highest state accolade an efficient can earn, celebrating integrity and professionalism. We are proud to congratulate our very own D.E. Brown, who is the 2024-25 Official of the Year in Swimming and Diving. Mr. Brown is a talented teacher and coach at Winnetonka, whose commitment and expertise has brought excellence to the sport for many years. Congratulations.
So D.E. Brown, I've heard while you are exemplary when it comes to swimming and diving, being the Official of the Year, I hear you do more.
A little bit more. I'm a longtime track coach at Winnetonka and a longtime cross-country coach still. So thank you for the recognizing and the chance to come here and do this. Very blessed to be in the North Kansas City School District. Dr. Edward Tate, such a champion for having our kids involved as being in the classroom and the field of competition. So having that support the whole way around, it's just been a great place to learn and grow as a career. And I was glad I was able to officiate with the other things that I do.
And how long have you been with the district?
Twenty-two years.
Only 22?
Twenty-two.
All right. Well, thank you. We're looking forward to the next 10. We've got plenty more to get out of you, all right? Who else besides Dr. Tate do you have with you here tonight?
So my wife Angie, who is a teacher at the Early Childhood Center. Fascinating, so she keeps the house going. My youngest son, Grant Brown, who is studying electronics at the Metropolitan Community Colleges.
Well, I know you as a teacher and a coach, and I have great respect for you in those regards. But I can tell you, our officials, we need more young men and women to join the ranks because you do set such a model and example for sport and how it is to be played in a way that enhances everyone's experience. And we have such great respect for you in doing that. You've given a lot of time. I should also thank your wife for that, because I know how much time that requires, too. But you are an exemplar for others, and I hope many young men and women will follow your example in that. So thank you.
Very blessed to be in North Kansas City.
We're blessed to have you. Thank you. Congratulations. Let's shake hands.
Next up, we have Cindy Boltmeyer, if she would come forward. Congratulations to Cindy Boltmeyer, named this year's Administrator of the Year by the Missouri Association for Pupil Transportation. She serves as our Assistant Director of Transportation and has been a champion for students for over 10 years. Cindy was chosen for her excellence in leadership and championing others, particularly her efforts in connecting staff members with the community through outreach, volunteerism, and participation in activities. MoAP is a statewide association of transportation leaders, and this award is the highest individual honor the organization grants. We're so proud to congratulate Cindy Boltmeyer.
Absolutely. That is very cool. I mean, receiving the highest award that they hand out is fantastic. And I have a special place in my heart for community outreach. So I am very, very grateful that you are the one connecting. It ties back to our balance scorecard. It is right there as one of the things that we're trying to do. And you are exemplifying what we're trying to do, so I appreciate it very much. Thank you. Who all do you have here cheering you on?
You know, I've got my team back here. Yes. So thank you for being here. I appreciate that so much, yeah.
I just wanted to add, I am so glad that this group figured out how cool you are because we've known it for a long time. Cindy was an incredible member of our Superintendent's Leadership Institute. And two years ago, all of her colleagues, everyone she was in the program with, voted her, our Vicky Baker Award winner. It's by your peers, saying that you are such a model for them and someone that they would love to rise to that level of leadership and inspiration. And I can tell you, every month when we came together for our sessions, Cindy was just so full of energy and exuberance and positivity like you always see her. So we're very, very grateful for your service to us. And we're pleased to have you here in North Kansas City Schools, and congratulations on your award. Thank you.
Thank you. As Cindy goes around, I'm going to go ahead and invite up the rest of her team who's here tonight from the Transportation Department because they are also being recognized as a department. If you would come forward.
Come on up.
For the 25th year in a row, I'm going to repeat this part because this is a big deal. For the 25th year in a row, North Kansas City School Transportation Department has earned the Exemplary School Bus Maintenance Award and the Total Fleet Excellence Award. The first award recognizes excellence in safety as determined by the Missouri State Highway Patrol inspection. The second recognizes exceptional fleet safety and overall upkeep. Both honors are a testament to the hard work and commitment to service of our transportation team. Congratulations to you all.
That is fantastic. Safety first. You guys are doing a great job. And I know that you get this, I mean, you are regularly honored for this work. And I appreciate that you're taking care of our kids, keeping everything clean and running, and safety first. It's fantastic. There are 161 buses. There are five tiers. That's the word I'm looking for. Five tiers that run, and it's 2.9 million miles annually, right? So this is not, this is not an easy thing to do. So you guys are doing fantastic work. So I appreciate it very much. And I know you all have fans out here. Would you like to name them?
My wife Cindy.
My wife Mikel and my daughter Olivia.
James and Jay.
It's just me tonight with these guys.
I'm a Dr. Evans.
Nobody ever says that, no. I love any time I either see you while I'm getting my gas or to come back in the shop, which you never let me help. You don't let me do much, which is smart. But you all are incredible, not just as mechanics, as people. You are just outstanding individuals who are good examples for everyone in the Transportation Department, for our kids, for all of us. I love any chance I get to spend time with you. And I'm very, very grateful for all that you do to keep us running. And I know there have been some crazy stories that this crew here could tell, and some really early morning hours, too. Especially last year with all of the snow days that we had. You're looking at some of the individuals who came in long before anybody else did to clear parking lots, to make sure that we could even get us in a position to start buses. And I so appreciate that. You always put our kids first, and your hearts are tremendous. We are so grateful to have you. And 25 years of this, it just shows what commitment you have. So thank you for that. It's an honor to have you at the board meeting, too. And guess what? After you shake hands, you don't even have to stay for the rest of it. That's your reward. But again, we're very, very thankful for each of you. So congratulations.
This concludes our extraordinary educational experiences for tonight. If you would like to excuse yourself, this would be a perfect time to do so. Thank you for coming.
I don't guess we got any takers for staying for the next part? Okay. We're up to visitors' comments at each regular business meeting. An opportunity is provided for visitors to address board members regarding any subject concerning education. Patrons are asked to contact Board Secretary with a request to speak prior to the meeting. Yellow cards are also available and located just inside the doors upon entering the boardroom. Each individual is allowed three minutes with a total of 30 minutes allotted. And while your comments will be heard, board members will not respond at this time. We do, however, follow up in a timely manner regarding questions or concerns. Because this is an open meeting, speakers are to refrain from discussing personal complaints involving individual staff members or students. And as I understand, we do not have any visitor comments this evening. So moving on to approving the agenda. Do we have any?
Move to approve.
Okay. Any questions or discussion? We have a motion in a second to approve the agenda. Is there any discussion on that? All of you in favor of approving the agenda, please say yes. Opposed? No? Okay, the motion has been carried, which leads us to the consent agenda. There are 30 items on the consent agenda. I do need to have a motion to accept the consent agenda.
Move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Okay, is there a second? Okay. And is there any discussion on that motion? Okay. And we are to call for the treasurer's report at this time?
Excuse me. I would like to abstain from the consent agenda.
Okay. That was going to be down when we call for the overall vote.
Okay, sorry.
Thank you. No, that's fine.
All right. Treasurer's report. The district's finance department is now in the process. Good for you, Matt. Closing the books for prior fiscal year. In doing so, additional revenue and expenditures may be recognized. Thank you very much. Old habits die hard. In doing so, additional revenue and expenditures may be recognized in the 2024-25 fiscal year as accrual transactions are recorded. July 2025, in fiscal year-to-date, operating receipts totaled $13.9 million, a 17.4% increase. While monthly operating expenditures totaled $7.8 million and 8.5% decrease. The increase in revenue is due to the timing in receiving the early childhood special education reimbursement. Current operating expenditures and encumbrances are comparable to the prior year. State general revenue collections for July 2025 increased 0.7%. Madam President, that is the treasurer's report.
Okay. Is there any further discussion on this? Okay, then I would ask that we call for the vote. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda, please say yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, no?
Abstain.
And an abstention. Duly noted. Okay. We are up to consent items for separate consideration. And there is one item for separate consideration. So do I hear a motion for this?
Move to approve the item for separate consideration as presented.
Okay, is there a second? Motion has been made in second. Is there any discussion? Okay. All of those in favor of this item, if you'll please say aye. Those opposed, no?
Abstain.
And one abstention. Okay. Moving right along. New business. Looks like the balance scorecard. Dr. Avila.
Well, hello again. It is my pleasure to present to you this year's balance scorecard draft for your consideration and approval. The balance scorecard is, let's see. Sorry. Here we go. The balance scorecard is important to our work because it sets the course for the school year. It helps identify what are the key priorities, the charge from the board, in terms of what it is you want us to accomplish as administration. The goals that end up on the balance scorecard end up there in two ways. One of them is by going back to our strategic plan, our five-year plan, which is our charge from the community and those who are part of that process in setting course for the district. The board considers the action plans that are within that overall strategic plan and decides which ones to activate and to continue on from year to year. There also are times where we have to consider our current needs and be responsive as well. So when you look at the balance scorecard, you have a combination of goals that come directly from the strategic plan and then those that are drafted just through discussion about how are we going to better support and serve our staff, our students, and our communities. During our retreat, you may remember that I took the questions from the strategic plan, I'm sorry, I took the strategies from the strategic plan and reframed those as questions because ideally, the goals that end up in the balance scorecard should help us to answer these questions that are here on the screen. I'll give you just a moment to read through those. So first up in the student quadrant, we have a goal that was new last year that we would like to carry over into this current school year. There is a great sense of pride about the vast number of opportunities and programs that exist for our students. However, in conversation last year, this board expressed a desire to ensure that we are getting the results from the programs that we are investing in. And so Dr. Sutton and his team developed a program evaluation process as well as a program evaluation schedule to help us ensure that we're always being thoughtful about our allocation of resources. The evaluations that were completed last year were early childhood and Sage. The plan for this year, if approved, would be for H-SAP and Abbott. There also has been conversation within the board about seeking further evaluation of our college and career pathways. And although pathways are not a program by definition, rather just a way that we do business here in North Kansas City Schools, there is a desire from the board to further study the impact of pathways and how we can strengthen the student experience. And so that would also be included in this goal. The second one that you see here on the screen is another carryover from not just last year, but from the past couple of years, as we've continued to seek ways to better support students who need a setting outside of a traditional classroom. And so you may recall some of the work that has been done with the development of TAP-C, along with some initial redesign and expansion of H-SAP. Dr. Porter and Shelley Sanders shared during the retreat some of their goals and their vision for how they would like to continue through phases of just overall redesign and expansion of what is a more comprehensive alternative education program to include our middle school and high school academies, H-SAP, Missouri options, and then, of course, TAP-C as well. The third goal here would be a new one. It's a reworded goal pulled from Strategy 1, Action Plan 4. And it really focuses on increasing students' ownership of their learning, their agency, them seeing themselves as agents of their learning. This goal would help, this goal is connected to further implementation of standards-based learning and grading and the way that it provides students clarity on their performance and tools that better enable them to identify how they can improve. That's the student quadrant. For the staff quadrant, we are seeking to answer this question here, which is related to Strategy 3. How will we ensure, develop, and support a healthy and highly capable workforce that is passionate about meeting the needs of each other and each student? The first goal is another one that we would like to carry over and continue to work with, continuing really to increase the capacity of our staff, both classified Continuing really to increase the capacity of our staff, both classified and certified, to respond to social emotional needs. And more particularly, this year, this goal has been narrowed and focused to professional development specifically. The implementation of classified PD district-wide has really allowed us to provide additional training and resources to staff. And one of the requests we receive again and again from our classified staff, especially transportation, recess clerks, our cafeteria clerks, is them asking for training to be better equipped to respond to students' emotional needs. And so this goal would allow us to do that. Goal Two was new last year, and it helped to direct the work of Dr. Jessica Martin as she developed a holistic wellness program district-wide. Continuing this goal would allow her to build on the work she began last year and to expand opportunities and supports to staff, such as increasing access for all staff to wellness spaces, career development pathways for classified staff, as well as expansion of employee resource groups, and many other strategies. The third goal is another carryover. Recruitment and retention remain a priority for us, just knowing the importance of having highly qualified staff in front of our students and running our operations. Dr. Johnson and his team, along with Matt Fritz, shared about the next iteration of this work, which includes of course efforts to bolster pay and benefits, salary and benefits for all staff, but also seeking innovative ways of recruitment, such as revitalizing our Grow Your Own program and strengthening our onboarding and mentoring opportunities for new staff. The final goal here is a new one, and it addresses our need to have a staffing model that allows us to respond to the growing needs of our schools and departments, most notably, the growth in staffing support needed for special education and ELL, as these programs have seen considerable growth over the last few years. In short, we need a staffing model that will allow us to address the needs more flexibly, equitably, and efficiently. Those are the goals in the staff quadrant. For the community quadrants, we are answering the question posed by Strategy Four, which says, "We will serve to unify our community." And so, a couple of ways that we do that is, number one, through advocacy. Public education continues to be a focal point for both state and federal legislation, and this goal allows Tammy Henderson and her efforts to continue forward with advocacy at the legislature, as well as within our community. The second goal here is another one carrying over from last year and in furthering Tammy's work to embed our district leaders within community organizations, as well as strengthening relationships within the communities, most notably, that's been done through her relationship and our collaboration with NNI, as well as continuing to seek ways to engage the population of our community who do not have children in our schools. The goal would be to allow Tammy and her team to continue to build on these connections through their current means, but also through a new system in particular, that would help pair community needs with students who need to complete service hours. And so that would be one tactic related to this goal, with the overall, the overall goal being to strengthen and support our connections with the neighborhoods. And then finally, the finance quadrant. And this one is basically the quadrant where we answer the question of how will we fund all the things that we say we want to do as it relates to our educational program and fulfilling our mission as a district. The first goal within this quadrant gives us the charge to effectively steward and monitor expenditures from the bond twenty twenty-five. With an eighty-one percent yes vote, we have the support of our community to further invest in our buildings, and this goal commits us to doing just that. The second goal is new, and as I shared with you at the board retreat, I like to think of this as a sister goal to the one that is in the staff quadrant, referencing the comprehensive staffing model. If we are to move forward with creating a comprehensive staffing model, we would need a fiscal model to support a more responsive approach to resource allocation. And then the final goal that you see here commits us to more regularly evaluating and responding to the sufficiency of our current operational and debt service levies. As Matt Fritz explained, this is something that we used to be able to do every three to five years, but due to the new uncertainties with funding, it is within our best interest to evaluate our levies annually. So, just as a reminder, once the balance scorecard is developed, these are high-level goal statements pointing us in a certain direction that then become the superintendent and cabinet goals, which we assign specific strategies, action steps, and metrics. From there, the work trickles down to the buildings and departments, creating an alignment of priorities, as we like to say, from the boardroom to the classroom. One noticeable difference that you may have heard me say again and again tonight is that there are a lot of goals, there are many goals that are carrying over from last year. And to me, this reflects a commitment of this board and to our administration of deepening and systematizing the work that is currently underway, rather than continuing to add new goals before we've solidified the current work. One piece of feedback we received from staff is, can we get good at something before we are asked to do something new? And I think when we consider how the goals trickle down to the classroom level, I think this balance scorecard would allow us to do just that this year. So, with that, I would like to hand it back to you, Madam President, for any questions or comments.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the board regarding the balance scorecard?
I don't have a question, but I think it's a great roadmap, and it'll be my pleasure to vote for it or to approve it. One of the things that I liked about it, and I said this when we met as a governance team, but I really liked the, and I think we approved some of it early on in our contracts, but to your credit and your team, having more online opportunities for our classified staff to do some enrichment to their training, and I think it's going to be really beneficial to that quadrant in helping us achieve that goal. Thank you all for that.
Carrie, did you have any question or comment?
Thank you for all of the work that you've put into this. I just, I say it every single year, but it's just so important, this whole process. And I'm always impressed by, when I go into schools and I go into classrooms, and this scorecard is front and center. So, certainly, it's worth the time and effort that goes into it, and I really appreciate it.
Thank you. Susan, did you have anything you wanted to add? Susan, I'm sorry.
Just wanna echo everything that Joe and Carrie are saying about a deep appreciation for the thoughtfulness that goes into this. And then, also, just want Anjali to hear that we've heard, we hear you when you say it's not about adding more to, but also recognizing all of the great work that's being done and seeing how that's already being lived out. So, our goal isn't to add a burden, but to celebrate all of the strengths of our district and continue to challenge ourselves to do more. I appreciate the way that you are shepherding and leading our district to do that. Thank you.
Erin, did you have any additional comments?
No, not really. I just appreciated the ability for all of us to come together and have really great conversation around these and about what's worked in the past and things that we still need to be focusing on and additional things that, you know, kind of, I was getting ready to say that we can add, even though we're trying, you know, not to add more. But I think it's not necessarily adding, but just amplifying, I think, some of the great things that we're doing. So, good stuff.
Yes, I would say on my half, I've taken this model and used it with other organizations that it's like, this is why we're not doing well across the board, because we haven't broken out main quadrants where we need to be focusing. We might have some that focus completely on students, but not so much on other areas. So I appreciate that, thank you. Do I hear a motion for us to accept this balance scorecard?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Then all of those in favor of approving this, please say aye.
Aye.
Any noes? Okay, then the balance scorecard has been approved, thank you.
Thank you.
And next we have superintendent, presentations, reports, board policy updates from Mr. Books? Book, sorry, singular.
I hear it a lot different ways. Good evening. Before you, we have a first read for a number of policies. Most of them are simply updates that were required by new laws that were put into effect or coming into effect here in August. We've got a couple of changes that were requested specifically by the district. We've got an update to our leave policy that really just matches what we've already done through the collective bargaining agreement. And then, we've got a change to our weapons in school policy that just makes a little tweak that allows administration to have some discretion to change discipline in the event of a possession of weapon in school in certain situations. So, student discipline policy is being updated to reflect the change in our personal device policy. So now there is a section in the discipline policy that addresses possession or use of personal devices in school. And then there have also been some changes, just really small changes, to the virtual policy course, or virtual course policy. So, that's a quick summary of them. Obviously, I'd encourage you to read through them in more detail, but I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Does anyone have any questions?
I just have something real quick. I want to personally say thank you for, we consented to a new board reorganization process, and I appreciate you taking time to review the kind of matching policy and making those revisions so that they both are aligned. So thank you, Steve.
You're absolutely welcome. Great, well these will be back next month for approval. Thank you.
Okay, now we have a summer school recap. Nick, you're up.
As Nick makes his way up, this is his first Board of Education presentation tonight. So take it easy on him. But as you recall, Nick was the principal at Maplewood Elementary for several years and now has taken on the role as Director of Elementary Education and Federal Programs and works closely with Dr. Lawson and Dr. Cronky. So we also has the role of supervising and working with summer school.
That was my first, my first role in the job was here's summer school. So I'm happy to report out the exciting things that we saw this summer. From June to early August, we served eight thousand two hundred and thirty students, which is thirty-eight percent of our total enrollment. This was down by a hundred and seventy-four students from last year, but we still saw really good participation across all grade levels. We saw about four, over four thousand elementary students, over thirteen hundred middle school students, and around two thousand high school students. So, it was still strongly participated, even though we were down just slightly by a hundred and seventy-four students. A highlight was in June, we opened up the brand-new Greenway Elementary. Students and families were welcomed back to this incredible, this incredible space. And it was really neat, because if you came to summer school in June, you kind of got a sneak peek of what this would look like as we opened in the fall. And in July, we had five Title I elementary schools offer a twelve-day literacy-focused session for students. This was supported with counselors, social workers, reading teachers, ELL teachers, that supported the academic needs of our students, but also the social emotional needs. And most importantly, it allowed us to continue those important academic interventions that we left off in May. The feedback from students and families and parents was fantastic. Everyone enjoyed July summer school. We specifically got great feedback from our families with students with special needs and who are ELL learners. And they were just very appreciative that we were able to offer those services and those specific interventions in the month of July. This was all made possible out of the reallocated funds from our two year-round schools. And I think it's something that our community is saying that they wanted, and feedback from teachers. We had this idea that it was gonna be hard to staff, we had to turn away teachers. They were so interested in teaching in July summer school. So, these are things that we're continuing to talk about and refine for next year. All of these reflected North Kansas City Schools' summer theme of every student, every day, even in the summer. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those for you.
I am grateful that there was such July participation. That's fantastic. Do we anticipate this will happen again next year?
Absolutely, yeah.
And maybe the year after?
Just to give you a little bit of feedback, these are our five schools that are historically our most, you know, our Title I schools are the prime schools. So, the families were really appreciative of that, just because a lot of these students are receiving these important services throughout the school year and that June, you know, they get that in June, but to get it in July, they were just so appreciative. We had, we had four classrooms that were, you know, our Tier Four autism classrooms. Those, that's a hard month for our families. So to be able to provide that for them was super impactful.
Will you?
No.
So, and I apologize, I should have asked you this question for tonight. So if you don't have this number, that's fine, you can get to me later. But I'm curious, so how many high school students, did you say, how many high school?
It was a little bit over two thousand students. That also includes students who are taking virtual summer school classes as well.
So how, what's the breakdown of that as far as students who are like taking advanced credits versus students who are taking makeup credits?
I'd have to get back to you at the exact number, but the majority are taking those credit recovery classes. But we, there is a large number taking honors courses, elective courses. We have a large number of students taking online PE, which is incredible. We give them garments, they have these fancy garments, and then they just track their steps, and they track their calories, and they track their heart rate, and they send it to their teachers.
Well, I ask, I was, I was talking to my still-best friend. We met in summer school before our freshman year at Winnetonka, and we were taking American history. And there was like four full classes of American, did you take summer school? Because we took early classes so that we could get in all of our electives that we wanted to. And it's like, everybody did that, and I just didn't know if that was still something that goes on so that we can get in as many electives as we want. So, I'd kind of be interested to see what that, you know, if students take advantage of that, so they can get in more.
Get back to you on that, yeah.
Susan, do you have any question or comment?
No, just a deep appreciation for summer school and the experience that my kids have in it, so thank you.
I taught summer school once, I will never do it again. So I can't believe that you had that many that were like dying to get out there to do that. That's just amazing.
We even had like, we had middle school, we had middle school teachers very interested in like trying to see what elementary would look like. And for twelve days, you know, if it wasn't their pay.
Okay, maybe twelve days.
Twelve days.
All right, thank you. Back to you, Dr. Daniels, back-to-school update.
Yes, we're gonna talk about the first day of school. So one week ago today, we welcomed back all of our students. We had a fantastic day, and we continue to improve our systems and our plans to best serve our twenty-two thousand students and their families. We about had one more child to take care of on day one. Leah Rose Jin, Principal of Linden West, went into labor. Welcome, Ellis Rose Jin. Yes, so they are all doing very well. We're grateful to have him with us. She will be back with us sometime in November, and everything is running very smoothly until then. We've assembled quite a crew for you tonight to hear just a little bit of an update around the systems and structures that we utilize to pull off the first day of school. But before we do that, we have a video, thanks to our communications department, so enjoy that. So, enjoy that.
Kids in the North Kansas City School District went back to school today.
Yes, students from the former Lakewood and Winwood campuses now go to the new Greenway Elementary School. This school is definitely unique.
Just seeing their eyes light up as they walk into this space and the possibilities of making new friends this year as we bring two communities together is really exciting.
From our exploration from the gym to the various classrooms, the library, cafeteria, they're all high marks.
It's pretty amazing in the inside because it's big and it has like downstairs that you see. It's pretty cool.
More buses, more bells, more alarms, more madness. School's back, people.
Well, one of our favorite stories to tell is that the first day of school. It's the time when we have the most engagement. Families are having a great time, students are having a great time, and we're so happy to be able to capture that. Wanted to give you just a few pieces of information from the first day communications coverage. First, our social media coverage on first day, on first day of school reached nearly 50,000 people across all of our platforms, including 4,300 who followed along via video as Peyton Galloway and I traveled across the district with Dr. Daniels visiting schools. In terms of news media coverage, we secured 22 total media hits, separate showings across all six of our local TV stations, including channels 41, 594, as well as KCWE and KSMO. In particular, the media coverage for the opening of Greenway reached nearly 484,000 viewers and for a total of 43 minutes of airtime over 24-hour span. This level of media coverage provided the district with a local publicity value of an estimated $81,400. This number represents what it would have cost us to buy the same amount of TV advertising. And so, very successful day in terms of communication. Lots of great stories were told, and again, it was just our privilege to be able to share that story with all of our families. At this time, I'm going to hand it over to Dr. Sutton to talk a little bit about academics.
Hey, you know, every, every year at this time, the beginning of the school year, for you former educators that have been in it, you know what I mean when I say how special education is and how fortunate we are to have that first day and that fresh start every year. I mean, there is no other industry, there is no other career where you have that kind of opportunity every single year. And there's just something special and amazing about having that opportunity every year. We just, just love it. And so, this is my 27th year now in education, and over time, as Lindsey Gunn, who works with us in strategic planning, often names it, there are some universal truths about the first couple of days of school that you experience, no matter what student you talk to, at what level. I've talked to that first day of school, probably a few hundred students, and asked them a few questions. So, one of the universal truths is certainly that the best part of the day, the first couple of days of school at the elementary level is recess, PE, and what else? Lunch, right? No matter who you talk to, what level, those, that's the best thing about the first couple of days of school. Sixth graders are over the moon when they learn that they get two Bosco sticks, not one. So, you talk to any sixth grader, when they're surprised to see that they get more food, my goodness, like that just makes their complete week. It's, it's incredible to watch how excited they get. And then, our K-12 students, anybody that you talk to are so excited about seeing their teachers again and seeing their friends. I think sometimes we often don't take into consideration the value that, that brings to our kids and those social interactions and our teachers. I'm always reminded of that when I have a foreign exchange student luncheon every year. I do it twice, once in the fall, and then once in the spring. And in the spring, what they always talk about are just how awesome our teachers are, how caring they are, how personable they are. And you see it and hear it from them, but you hear it from our kids, too. So, credit to just the work that our teachers do and the relationships they build and our administrators with our kids. Certainly, though, we have a lot of new things, too, going on that are really exciting that I want to highlight. Of course, HSAAP is on the fourth floor now at the NIC. We just got her signed up. Dr. Evans was sending us some photos. But what a way and opportunity to really elevate alternative education in North Kansas City. I tell you, you walk up into that space, the kids are so excited, the staff is so excited, and really, what a great way to honor those kids and support those kids to have the very best learning experience that we can provide them. Has been really, really incredible to see and really proud of Dr. Porter and Shelley and all those that have been working on that. Our professional internship program, first year for that, we began last year by just developing the program. Now, we have a little over 100 students, about 110, I think, students from all four of our high schools that also meet on the fourth floor on a daily basis. So, those students are going to spend quite a bit of time this first semester learning about professionalism and preparing for those career internships before we send them out into the field. And Shannon Shelton, our internship teachers, have just done a fantastic job. But that's the first year. So, the demand for this, I think, is only going to grow. So, that's going to be, I think, really an exciting program for us to keep an eye on. All of our fifth graders will be going through the Future Ready Lab this year. We started today. We had a group from Crestview over there today, and anytime you walk in there, the energy, the enthusiasm, the excitement is just, is just awesome. So, all of our fifth graders will be in there this year. They even found a way to kind of build in some extra days if we have a snow day. We don't want to, we don't want any kids to miss out. So, they've done a great job putting that calendar together. CSD Credit Union, Winnetonka High School is going to be fully functional. We had a little soft opening this last year. Now, it's a fully functional credit union. We have the ribbon cutting, I know, coming up here in just a couple of weeks. But that is the second credit union in the state of Missouri. There's one in Springfield, but again, no other school district has, and school has those opportunities. So, we're excited to see that continue to grow and prosper. And then, of course, we have a new policy around cell phones as well. And I tell you, it is going overall so well. I've been in all of our high schools, all of our middle schools, and it's extremely rare to see kids walking down the hall right now with cell phones, extremely rare to walk into classrooms and see it. Have we had a few? Yeah, we certainly have. But our kids, our families have done just an incredible job and just so, so proud of them. And I'll certainly provide you with some data here in the coming weeks, too, to just kind of give you some more insight into how all of that's going. But I just appreciate, you know, this work that we do with the balanced scorecard every year and the strategic plan is so important because I do think that over time and down the road, one of the most important things that we have to be able to do in public education is stay relevant. And if, if we can't stay relevant with some of the things that we're doing and adapt as our society and the context of our society changes and changes pretty drastically, public education could be in trouble. But our Board of Education, our staff, our leaders, just do an incredible job of just continuing the work of some of the things I just mentioned and what we have on our balanced scorecard to just keep getting better every year. That's what, that's what this is all about. So, it's been a great first week. We love having our kids back, love seeing the shiny yellow school buses in the neighborhood. We look forward to a great year. Dr. Johnson?
All right. In terms of staffing, I think it's important to really go back to convocation and thinking about the energy and excitement of 35, 3600 staff members all in one space, ready to come back and serve students, and the message that Dr. Daniels delivered of being, starting a revolution and, and being connected to one another again, to making sure that we consider each other, their invisible backpacks, where they're coming from. These staff members were so excited to get back to school. And I'm proud to announce that on the first day of school, we had our buses, our hallways, our cafeterias, our administrative offices, and most importantly, our classrooms filled with smiling faces to welcome our students back to school. On the first day of school, we had a 99.7% fill rate, so of 1,793 certified staff members. We only have four positions that don't have a, that need long-term solutions at this point in time. But again, those positions that are not filled yet with long-term solutions, they are filled with either a district retiree or a long-term sub who is qualified in the area that they're serving our students in. So, we're proud to announce that. We do have 34 student teachers or teacher candidates, as we call them this nowadays. They are from a variety of universities across the state, and we are proud to, to be able to mold them. 19 of those are year-long, they're in year-long programs, they're going to graduate in May. We have 15 that are going to graduate in December, and our goal is to look to recruit them and potentially hire them for our pool hires as we prepare for the '26, '27 school year, just to get a quick head start. 21 of those student teachers or teacher candidates qualify for stipends, and they're being paid to student teach in our classrooms, $1,000 per month, which is typically $5,000 per semester. So, we're off to a great start in terms of our certified staff. We're also in really good shape in terms of our classified staff. We added a host of new positions and a host of new faces to our family in North Kansas City Schools in those certified, or excuse me, the classified work groups. These included bus drivers, food nutrition services staff, administrative assistants, and a host of other areas across the organization. So, we have a strong fill rate across most of our classified work groups with admin assistants and bus drivers coming at, at the highest with a 98% fill rate. And in fact, our fill rates are 90% or above in all areas for classified work groups except nurses and paraprofessionals. So, we're still working hard to make sure we get our nurses filled as well as our paraprofessionals. I mentioned in previous Friday updates that the paraprofessional, paraprofessional position is one that we are still, again, just working hard to be a point of focus to recruit and retain some of those individuals to support our students. So, we're working closely with academic services, more specifically, special education, to make sure that we place paraprofessionals in the areas, areas of highest need. So, those fill rates are about 89% right now. I do want to mention, we added 24 paraprofessionals to this school year. So, we're just making sure that we, as our students' needs grow, that we are putting the proper supports in place for our students. Overall, we're having a great year to start off with, having fantastic adults serving students in our buildings.
Okay, so, the first day, first week of school, we had some real highlights. And when we broke down the first day with a lot of the academic team, a lot of the leadership in the district that went around the buildings, there was a consistent theme that came out, and that was how spectacular our buildings looked, how spectacular our grounds looked. And I told the operations team again today in our meeting that I don't, that doesn't go unnoticed by me. I know how much work that goes in, and I saw them out mowing on the weekends, and I saw them in the buildings getting things ready, and we still had Tuesday to go. But very, very proud, I know Dr. Oakley was very proud, too, of the way the buildings looked that first day of school. You know, that first impression for our families is, is one that we, we value, and we valued ever since I've been in this district, and it certainly shows. So, some numbers. As you, as you noticed, we sent you some communications. We went to a different routing system this year. We went from VersaTrans to Traversa. We also have a new app that, for our parents, from my stop to my ride. With that came some challenges. As you saw in Nick's presentation, we had four or 5,000 kids we bused in the summertime. We did run Traversa, but then you turn to 15,000 or 16,000 kids, a lot of different changes. There were some bumps in the road that first day. Although we emptied by 5:35, there was a lot more buses. Normally, there's some one-offs here or there where students get on a bus, a wrong bus, or get off the wrong bus, and we're circling around and getting, there was a, there was more, there was more concern there, I guess would be the right word, because there was a lot more issues than we normally. And we, there were some bumps in the road, quite frankly. But as you met that team today, they circled the wagons, and I knew they would. It went from a, a more traditional routing system to a cloud-based routing system. It's very, very complex, but it's very, very good, and now we know it even better inside and out. I think sometimes that's by trial and error. But by Friday of last week, we were at 4:59, and yesterday, we were at 4:56, buses were empty. And that is very close to where we should be on day one, or after we have, everything's leveled out. Just to remind the board, after two weeks, we go through everything. We go through all our routing. We go through everything. We make sure it's balanced. We make sure new drivers aren't, if there are issues. And the reason why we wait two weeks is because going in and out of every different school, it, you know, it could be a dismissal and loading issue, could be a routing issue, could be just a balance of kids on school bus issues. Really, 4, you know, 4:56 yesterday, when, when Michael told me that, that's getting darn close. So, we're very, you know, we're really pleased with how they responded, and I think our community is, too. One good thing that came out of that initial is we are up over 5,200 on my Ride app as far as participants, was as higher than it ever was under our previous one. So, we're going to continue pushing that out. Food service, as to Dr. Sutton's point, we love to serve food. That first day, we served 15,863 meals. Yesterday, we, and generally speaking, the first day, even in my house, we, we pack them lunches, and then that slowly subsides once in a while. And yesterday, we served 18,855 meals. And we will see, see that continue to grow, but just think about that, 18,855 meals yesterday we served. Moving on to technology, as of today during operations, Dr. Whaley told me that we have given our students 20,875 devices. One thing that we did different in technology with feedback from our academic folks in our buildings in the elementary level is they really wanted to try to get the devices out before school started. That was challenging, but we, we met that call. They were really pleased about that. And I know that there's testing that comes right away in the elementary schools. We were able to, we were able to provide that, so they were very pleased with that. And then, our high schools and middle schools, yesterday was the last one with our Winnetonka Peter pattern. So, we feel really good about where we're at with that. But 20,875 devices in our students' hands. So, overall, really good start, as, as Dr. Sutton mentioned. We learned a lot in, in transportation, but that team is strong, and we feel good about where we are moving forward with this new system. So, any questions? I'm turning it over to Madam President.
Thank you. Any questions? We'll start with Ms. Wagner.
I think it's great. I think that the first day of school is fantastic, and I love everything that you're doing. And I have to tell you, I have a good friend who left our district about, this will be her second year that who left. She went to a neighboring district. We will not name it. She, I think, is starting to regret her decision, and I think, you know, she missed convocation, which she loved, and she asked me about convocation several times the last time I saw her. She missed the camaraderie with her, with her friends because it's, it's a good group. We all support one another. She missed some of the policy even because there are some things going on at our new district that would not have happened in our district. And I think it just speaks a lot to the work that happens here and, and what we do to support our teachers. And I think she's a few bunko games away from coming back, honestly. So, I'll just, I'll keep working on that. But thank you for everything that you do here. I think we lead the pack.
Dr. Ward, hit.
As Dr. Sutton said, some of us have education experience, really know how critical that first day is. And I was so focused of being in the building, it's nice to hear how much is going on outside the building. And sometimes you lose sight of that. So, thank you all for making sure somebody, and maybe it's in this room, talked about the mission is in the building, but you all support it so much. So, just a word of thanks, a huge word of thanks.
Yeah, I really don't have anything to say except thank you, thank you, thank you. I mean, any feedback that I received was all positive, and it just speaks to everyone in this room and beyond this room's effort on behalf of kids. So, thank you.
Yeah, we had a great first day, and I, I'll just say that we've, our transportation has been very smooth and seamless. So, you know, if there's hiccup somewhere, it didn't, you know, we had a really great experience. So, so, thank you to everybody for that. And then, also, just all the fun stuff that comes along with, you know, the new school year, the jamborees and all the fun, you know, we can hear stately from our house, and we're up there a lot anyway, but it's just, the vibe is all over the community from, you know, from sunup to sundown. So, it's a very cool vibe.
Susan? Did you have any, Susan, do you have anything you wanted to add?
I'm still thinking about convocation. I was so inspired and energized and wished I had more mascara because I cried many times throughout this, the session. So, again, I just want to thank you for all of the work that you did going into that and all of the behind-the-scenes people that weren't on stage that were making it, that made it possible for us to have such an energizing and unifying experience. So, that was amazing. And Poppy has reported to me that second grade is the best grade ever. Of course, they didn't tell me.
had more mascara, because I cried many times throughout this, the session. So, again, I just want to thank you for all of the work that you did going into that, and all of the behind-the-scenes people that weren't onstage, that were making it, that made it possible for us to have such an energizing and unifying experience. So, that was amazing. And Poppy has reported to me that second grade is the best grade ever. Of course, they didn't tell me that they had pictures with you until after you sent them. But then, they reported to me that they had conversations with you. So, thank you for also the special care you take, Rochelle, and just making sure that you go out and visit the schools and connect with our kids. So, super thankful for that. So, yeah, again, just very, very, feeling a lot of gratitude for the district. And I know the transportation things were a big wop-wop, and things happen, and there were certainly families that were upset. And I remember, the first year we were in the district, Charlotte was forty-five minutes late on her bus, and that was with the old system, and I was freaking out. So, I totally empathize with the parents that that was happening to, but also know how much work goes on behind the scenes to learn from and have lessons learned. And so, again, appreciate all that after-action review that I know was happening in the moment to fix those things. So, appreciative, again, even when things don't go well, that we continue to challenge ourselves to do better. So, thank you.
Erin?
Excuse me. Yeah, I'll just say, as a former educator as well, there is nothing more exciting than going back that first week of school, and all of the energy that comes with, you know, like, I go to my work every day, and there's some fun people there, but it's nothing like the energy that you get at the beginning of a school year. So, I was super excited and pumped to be part of convocation this year. The convocation that I've always heard about North Kansas City Schools convocation, and I finally got the inside scoop. So, that was really awesome. And like, one thing that I have to say about our district is, how can you go wrong with a district when your superintendent does a communication spoof with key and, key and peel spoof? Like, that was amazing. That was really fun. I made, I've made so many people watch that, so, and shared it as much as I can. Thinking about just a couple of things that you guys talked about, from the perspective, just to give some feedback from like, a mom perspective, the cellphone policy, bless, I really think that it's a good, you know, I've had some different feedback of, you know, well, we don't need that shoved down our throes. And I think we need to look at it from a different perspective of it. It's not that, it's just, it's not a punishment, we're just trying to open people's eyes again, and get them to connect again. And I think that it's great, because I feel like the teachers are really empowered now to support it, because they have, you know, it is the law. And I was also, a couple of funnies, number one, I had a friend that posted on Facebook marked safe from being texted by my student on the first day of school. So, so that was nice, because I'm one of those moms that usually will get multiple texts from my child on random, random things. And also, just so you know, I feel like the communication has been really good, because I went through, and I was reading through our smore for Staley, and there's always the rubric at the bottom. So, I showed it to my daughter, who's now a ninth grader, and I said, have you seen this? Like, do you understand what the policy is, if you, and she's like, oh, have I seen that? Only every single teacher shows it, you know, multiple times. So, so I commend them on, you know, the teachers that my kids have anyway, really owning that, and, and explaining to the kids what the process is, because I think that that's really important, that it's not just another thing that's going to go away next week, when we don't feel like enforcing it anymore. And then, just the last thing, on the bus issues, I just wanted to say, our principal at our elementary school, because we did have some of the buses that were running, you know, a good hour, they came in at five-thirty. And our principal was great, because I don't know if all elementaries are using Class Dojo this year, is that a, are we all using them? Most of them? But I mean, she was on Class Dojo right away and said, hey, bus A, B, C, D, E, not here yet. And then, she was clicking through, bus A, B just got here, A, these buses just left. And then, our Facebook group, our neighborhood Facebook group was going back and forth on, hey, what have you heard? Hey, she just posted this on Class Dojo. And I think we're all kind of used to, we've got to get over those bumps, you know, that first day. So, but I just love the communication that was going back and forth. So, anyway, I'll be quiet now, but overall, awesomeness.
Yeah, thank you all. I also get to go to, and interact with coaches and teachers in other states. So, I got to hear at a meeting today about, well, I guess they were basically, on the Kansas side, just throwing their Board of Education under the bus, when the people were complaining about the cell phones. They're like, well, it's the Board of Education, so it's not my fault, so, too bad, take it up with them. And I said, well, we had the state legislature to be behind, so, you know, a little bit larger impact there. So, that was kind of interesting to me, to hear what they were going on. And at another school that I went to, I mean, the mom came out, she was mad or in a wet hen, and couldn't get her kid into school, or couldn't get him, I don't know, it was, it was an issue. And it's like, I didn't see anything like that going on in our schools. And it's amazing to me that three thousand families quit making lunch after the first week. We're done with this, you know, just buy your lunch like the other kids. So, thank you.
And I guess we're up to, you're still up, Dr. Evans, bond issues?
Thank you, Dr. Johnson. We will begin to, well, in September, we're going to bring for your consideration the transportation complex. That is a twenty-two, twenty, twenty-two bond project. So, we will still monitor that, even though this, on the balanced scorecard, as you saw this evening, it's a two thousand twenty-five bond update. But I think it's important for us to recognize that we are still finishing up the two thousand twenty-two bond expenditures, and that's where you see that, those dollars on the overall project being spent, will be on the north transportation hub.
Yeah, so that one project that's still out there, we've talked about this a little bit. So, this is where that north transportation hub is, is going to go. This is an aerial shot of the Staley High School campus. Way up on the north side is, is where that, that new building is going to go. And just for reference, right there, those, those boxes there on the left side, those are the houses that, that butt up to the property at Staley. So, if you have friends or neighbors up there that are concerned about this being built in their backyard, it's, it's quite a long distance from their, from their homes, and there's quite a buffer there, up there as well. And this is what it will look like roughly. So, the, the brick will match Staley High School, the panels match Staley High School, it'll very much be a, a part of that campus. And they'll have a fueling station there, it has a maintenance bay, a wash bay, and some administrative area up there as well.
So, moving on to the, the two thousand twenty-five bond, most of the money that's spent through, or through this bond right now is through the NIC, as you, so those dollars are, are spent as far as the purchase price. And then, what we have done then is add all the different major projects that we have going on, and that's what we will continue to monitor, as the balanced scorecard said. So, you'll start seeing those dollars come in from our major projects. See the Oak Park PAC, Newmark, North Gate, and then Oakwood Manor was approved this evening in our, in our, in our agenda. So, Oakwood Manor will be right out of the gate, along with transportation. You'll see those right, like I said, I mentioned the, in September, for the year's consideration, will be transportation. So, we'll begin that project, and then Oakwood Manor will happen this spring. Oops, sorry.
That's good. So, this summer, we didn't open a big building. We had Gateway had their soft opening this summer, and their, their big opening. But we had a lot of little projects going on. I say little projects, altogether, it was over eight million dollars. So, West Inglewood, here we did new flooring, we, we painted the building, new light fixtures, new ceiling, new flooring in the kitchens. Ravenwood, very similar scope of work there. It's amazing what a fresh coat of paint can do. So, Fox Hill Elementary, again, flooring. And this is one where we started to replace some of the rooftop units, and we got about half of those replaced this summer. And so, we're hoping to sort of march on through that in the, in the future. Restrooms, we, we did a lot of restroom repair and, and updates as well. So, the Northland Innovation Center, if you were traveling south on North Oak today, you may have caught a new sign there. This went up today. We have another new sign that's going to go up later this week. The Northwest Missouri State sign comes down, and we're coordinating with them, because they want their sign back. So, we're coordinating with them and, and their truck. But we're starting to, to brand that building as our own. We've done a lot of work up there, not only on the fourth floor, but also throughout the building, just making it on, on our security system, our keying system, just a, a lot of work like that going on up there. And then, this is another little project that we had going on. This is sort of a, a fun one. So, at two of our schools, we added some really inclusive playground pieces. That was Davidson and Bell Prairie. We just got, got these pictures today, and so I wanted to include this in here as well. So, I thought it was really cool seeing this little boy in a wheelchair, he was able to get there on this merry-go-round by himself, and, and play with some friends there. So, that was really good to see. Oakwood Manor, as Dr. Evans said, this one was approved tonight, so thank you very much for that. You can see the big gym addition highlighted with yellow there. And then, there'll be a lot of updates in that green area, the administrative area. And actually, we're going to do a lot of updates throughout, where we're going to be just replacing floor tile, and, and painting, and doing, doing all of those things. And here's a couple of views of what that might look like. A, a new, a new entrance canopy, really sort of defining the entrance there to Oakwood Manor. And there, along with this, they will get four new classrooms. And so, that's what that upper left-hand corner depicts is, what that classroom might look like. And then, that lower picture is just the, the renovated administrative office. And then, we've seen these pictures before, too, but we're, we're getting a little bit farther along into the design of what those performing arts centers might look like at both Winnetonka and, and Oak Park. And so those are both, turn out to be, you know, really exciting projects, and I, I think that will really make a positive change in those schools. So, with that, would be happy to entertain any questions.
Not this time.
Okay. Erin?
I think you've covered everything, gentlemen. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you.
I guess we're to Board Liaison Reports. I don't know if there were any committees that have met, that, any reports? Joe has some? Okay. Thank you.
From the legislative or public relations view, and Tammy can, if there's anything that we need to talk about, we, but we've met with two of our municipalities, KCMO and North Kansas City. North Kansas City was a long time coming, but it was a very positive and productive meeting. And I think where there may have been some consternation between the two entities, North Kansas City Schools and North Kansas City City of, I think that the relationship building went a long way out of that meeting. And Mayor Smith has already circumvented the process that we had in place, and we've got a meeting already set up. Instead of quarterly, it's six weeks. So, we've got that going. And then, I'm sure some of my colleagues will mention the North Kansas City Business Council meeting we went to, we had a presentation by, an economic presentation by Dr. Chris Kuhl, and then the Northland Regional Chamber. We had a World Cup update, and how it's going to impact Kansas City, and some of the ins and outs. So, we continue to be involved in our community, and there's a lot going on.
Thank you. Okay. Susan, did you have any committee or liaison?
Yes, I do.
Okay, thank you.
We met earlier in August to outline our approach for this year, as well as identify the draft, our initial ideas that we have, as we engage in a conversation with Rochelle. So, we will be meeting with Dr. Daniels, I believe, next week, to continue that conversation. And again, the intention is to enhance all of the greatness that is already happening, and to continue to do more of the areas where we have strengths, and identify how we can come to consensus on where we will focus our, our attention, because we know that Rochelle is highly energy ambitious, and always has a million amazing goals. And so, we want to make sure that we encourage all of that great energy, and then also figure out what will be most helpful to set her up for success for this next year. So, we'll have that conversation next week, and share out with the rest of the board where we land in terms of our areas of focus for this year.
Thank you. Ms. Peters, did you have any? Okay. I think that's it, people. Future meetings, we're not going to meet again until September thirtieth. Seems like a long time. Maybe there's a football game or something we can join up at. Okay.
This Friday.
This Friday? There you have it. Okay. So, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.